Hello.
You're welcome. So, welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting on March 23rd, 2021. And I know we have the revised agenda that I had sent out because I made, I added the Building Committee minutes, but we still have a tiny correction for the Building Committee minutes. So I don't know how you want to handle that, Larry.
Well, first item on the agenda is trustee education. So why don't we just follow that?
Yeah.
Right? And then, and then when we get to consent agenda, motion and such, then we'll make an adjustment to that.
Okay. So, the reason I added the intellectual freedom for the trustee education piece was because of the information that I sent out was, was actually from Lee, both Lee and Jill contributed, contributed to the pop culture moment we were having about the six books that the estate of Dr. Seuss, the publisher, is no longer publishing these six titles. And it became a storm in a teacup about, you know, its censorship to not have them, or its cancel culture. And I, I think I was talking to Ginny and she felt that this would be a really good thing to talk about. So I sent you our response about, because people were asking about these, about these titles. And I sent the link to the ALA Freedom to Read, the Library Bill of Rights. And that's kind of where we are. I, I think that some aspects of the media tried to turn this idea into a discussion that it's not what libraries were thinking. We do have a responsibility to to have lots of different points of view. And we, we do have two, Jill, two of the titles of the six. And we didn't plan on removing them from the shelves. We've been trying to supplement the idea that if you have a question, if you don't know how, you know, how do you explain this to your children? How do you talk to your children about it? Trying to come up with a curated list, try to talk to us about other ideas you could have. And I think that we certainly don't pick titles that have, they might be beloved, like Laura Ingalls Wilder is a beloved series. We will never use that in a story time because one of the, because of her portrayals of Native Americans. And one of the quotes is, no, what was it? The only good Indian is a dead Indian. And I, I know that several parents that I've talked to said that they thought that that was a wonderful way to teach their children, right? It was between the parent and the child, the library's not inserting themselves into this conversation. So that's really what I had to say about intellectual freedom. And it's really good that both Lee and Jill are here because they probably could answer questions a lot better than I can. But do you have questions about this topic? Or do you have concerns?
So what kind of reaction have you gotten from the public? Much?
Um, I've got stopped at Wegmans quite a bit. But I haven't heard, I haven't heard anybody here talk about it. I know that we had a couple of people reach out. They wanted to put the items on hold.
I wondered about that.
Within, within the library listserv, all 33 libraries, there were libraries that were, were pulling the titles off the shelf. There's some libraries that will remove it from the circulating collection and put it in some kind of a history collection to call it a historical artifact. There's some concern over if the book, somebody would check it out and not return it, they're going to keep it, right? Because
They're going to sell it.
Right.
Value is through they're going to sell it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. But, you know, if it doesn't come back, those two titles, then they don't come back. I just
Yeah. They're gone.
I think they've been, right now, the two books that we have are the, the zoo one and, if they're in the zoo and the, I think I saw it on Mulberry Street. Right now, they're getting checked out. We've gotten questions about it and it's just been a curiosity, really. It's people checking out the books to see why, you know, why have these been pulled? So really, that's, that's really kind of been about it. You know, we've gotten, you know, people have been talking about it, but it hasn't really been a huge issue.
Again, I don't think I've seen an issue here in this building, or I haven't. I think we might have had one person who sent us an email or some kind of a comment. But again, it's people who know me and know I work at the library, start these conversations. And then start ranting about cancel culture. And I tried to extricate myself from the conversation. It's like, I'm like, this is really cancel culture. It's, it's, it's not. This is a 70-year-old book that the publisher decided to not republish. Yeah.
It actually happened last year and they just announced it this year.
Yeah, really. Are there other, are there other resources or other, other books, movies, any, anything else that, that falls into the same category? Or is it just because Dr. Seuss is getting so much publicity now and that?
Yeah, it's, it's the publicity thing. I mean, you know, many other books that are older, just kind of quietly go out of print every year. I mean, the copyright owners choose all the time to just stop publication for one reason or another. And I think that because, you know, some of these titles, you know, Dr. Seuss, everyone loves Dr. Seuss.
Sure.
So I think this is just because it's such a high-profile author that, that this reaction has come of it. This happens all the time. It's just
Yeah.
In this instance, you know.
Disney has certainly done its, its share of those kinds of portrayals as well. So that's why I guess I asked if there were other, you know, movies or anything else that people are, are up in arms about.
Not really. Like Lisa mentioned, the Laura Ingalls Wilder books, you know, are somewhat problematic, you know, and especially because those are also very well-loved, you know. So I mean, you know, and like in those Disney movies now, they have a disclaimer at the front saying that these are a record of the times. These are the viewpoints that were once portrayed, but now we're looking through a, a new lens, you know. So I mean, you know, I, I can't really think of any other ones offhand that have made such a big issue as these books now.
Okay. Okay, great.
Right. And we're, we have them in our collection now and we'll continue to circulate them until, you know, and we'll weed them out just like we do any of our other books when the time comes, when they're falling apart, or when they don't come back, or, you know. So.
Very good. Anybody, anybody else? Thoughts, comments, questions?
So I don't think, so nobody feels that we need to do anything further on this, right?
I think we should leave it alone. Unless Lisa feels that there's, yeah, it should be left alone.
Yeah. Both Jill and Lee, you know, we feel like the more we say, the more it just invites comment and keeps the story going.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Anybody?
No.
Okay, we'll move on then. Thank you very much. That, that's certainly thought-provoking, you know. So let's move on to the consent agenda. I think the process is, one, to have a motion to accept. And secondly, in the second, so do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Joe.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, Russ. There is one comment I would make on the Building Committee meeting, and that is just simply that Joe Runkel attended the meeting and not Jill Hand. So my apologies for copy and paste without, without really looking closely at who was there and who wasn't. So anyway, that would be the one change I would make to the Building Committee minutes. Are there others? Any other comments, questions, or thoughts about the, anything on, within the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion to accept?
I. I.
I.
Opposed? Hearing none, then we carried unanimously. Okay, very good. So we're on to the action items then. And this is for approval of the February 2021 financial statements. We have many discussion about that.
Approved.
What's that?
Joe's going to make the motion.
To approve.
Approved.
Okay, we have a second?
I will second. Ellen?
Any discussion about the financial statement? We seem to be on track, I guess. There's nothing that
Yep.
Didn't look like anything that was really out of, out of sorts.
No.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none then. All in favor of the motion?
I.
I.
Opposed? Sorry about the phone, but nobody's here to answer it. So two more rings. Four rings and then the people who are selling the car warranty can bother somebody else.
True.
Okay, second item on the agenda then is to approve the February 2021 claims. Have a motion to accept?
I will make the motion.
Okay, a second? Okay. Dixie, you're just picking somebody as soon as the first person who waves their hand?
Linda, Linda seconded.
Okay. All right. Do you want me to call, I could call that out if you'd like that officially. Any discussion about that, about the claims?
No.
Yeah. Okay, very good. All in favor of the motion?
I.
I.
Opposed? And that carries as well unanimously. Okay, very good. Okay, discussion items. The strategic planning process would be first up. Ginny, are you taking that on or?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. So you'll all remember, a month ago, we tackled the mission and vision and purpose with Melina after our meeting. And she, so we did a lot of work that day. It certainly got me thinking. We had the exercise ahead of the meeting that asked a lot of probing questions about how we feel about the library and our roles, whether we're staff or board. And so we got to a point where we really didn't finish our work there. So Melina charged us with this question. How do we feel about the mission and vision statements and the values that we agreed to eight years ago compared with now? And did our things that have, things changed? Has our perspective changed? Has the world changed? The library world especially? So a few of us had agreed to meet after that and talk about next steps. And we had a good conversation. It was Jackie, Russ, Lisa and myself, I believe. Right? And I, as a result of our conversation, I called Melina back because we kind of decided we just, we, every time we talked about it, we were like, okay, we're describing the exact same thing we already did. Now are we going to remember what we talked about? Where were we? So I had a good conversation with Melina and she, she really said, you know, the four of you who met, go through this exercise yourselves, the four of us that I just mentioned. And then present that to the group again alongside the existing mission and vision that we've already looked at from 2013. So we will do that. We haven't completed that work yet, but the four of us will kind of work this through and come up with our idea. And then it gives you something to respond to, to pick apart, to challenge, rather than have everybody, what are your three thoughts? And what's your idea? And how do you feel about this word? So the next step really is for the four of us, our, our little ad hoc group, to do this exercise and come to a consensus with what we have, meet briefly with Melina. She kept saying outside, I'm going to meet outside. We're going to meet someplace not on Zoom. So I'm hoping it will actually happen. And then the whole group will come together to do that final exercise. And there will be a little bit of work on that that's just something I'll send out ahead of time for people to think about. So we're hoping in terms of a timeline to have this done by this time in May. Is that right, Lisa? Is it kind of?
Yeah, I think that's
Russ, what we were thinking of. Um, so I just wanted to kind of let the board know where we were at. So we haven't completed it. And so our next step is going to be for our little group to meet and talk about it, fine-tune it, and then present it. And the other thing, and I haven't talked to Lisa outside of this meeting, but Melina did suggest, just in terms of probably practicality, that if it's possible, if we could meet not during a board meeting, because it was sort of clunky to try to get our work done and then have the staff come in, or were they, I don't know, maybe, I don't know how we feel about that. That's still a little bit of a ways out, but we can think about how we want to organize that. So that's my report. It wasn't very meaty, M-E-A-T, but
Ginny?
Yes.
So the exert, exercise that you're speaking of, that the four of you will do, is that a new exercise different from what we did as a board?
Um, it's going to be, it's really going to be similar. It's really going to be talking about, so here's what we did. Which I would share with everybody, is we had materials to look at, like Lisa actually provided a lot of materials that were focused on what's happening in the field of library services all over the place as a response to a lot of things, including the pandemic, but also just how has changed, how library services are changing. So that informed some of it. We also, we also talked about what's happening locally as well. And the one exercise, I'll, I'll just tell you that we didn't, we didn't do the last time. And this is to, I can't remember, we talked about it at another meeting. I actually did it myself. I pretended I was a committee. So this is an exercise, I'll just tell you what it's going to be. You, if we were in the real world, we would have people at tables in groups of four or five, and you would come up with your own. So there might be four different scenarios. We can't do that. So I just came up with one. And what, the question is, can you describe a time at the library where you can, where something successful happened for a library customer as a result of the library? What, what changed? What happened? And if you are a board member and you're not, or you're a new employee, you're not coming up with it, you could describe instead an ideal situation that you would love to hear about happening at the library. This is, this is just one I came up with off the top of my head. The library staff was able to, and there was like a formula, the library staff was able to help a customer gather information about starting a new business. The librarian, the customer came in looking for help in researching information on Reference USA. And she was given help and direction by a librarian on duty. She worked at the library that continued work at home and was able to access webinars and find information on census data, making it possible for her to make decisions about her next steps and create a plan for her new business. So that's kind of maybe a little long, but the, pardon me? Oh, anyway, that was long, but there's a way you take, break that apart. Um, so you identify somebody that was helped, somebody that did the helping and action that happened. And you would then tie it into how it fits into our mission or our vision. So that's sort of a really rough way around it. I'm sure librarian might have a much more touching story than that one. Um, so I actually went through it. I went on Reference USA to check it out. I don't know how many people are even aware of it, but this incredible resource that we have. So anyway, that was just something, again, get people kind of thinking about this and thinking about an ideal. I'd start to think about our goals and our goals and our values. And so that, whatever the stories we hear might tie back to some values that we have. So we'll, so what is going to happen is we're going to sort of do a dry run, go through this so that it's tweaked and it makes sense. Melina is going to be at that final meeting, walking us through this. We're not doing it on our own. She's coming back. She's 100% committed. So she gave us homework to do. She'll look at it and walk the rest of us through it, and then we'll be finished.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Wait, Ginny, you suggested that that might be in May. Is that something that would be wrapped into a board retreat that you had also looked at in May, or two separate, two separate things?
Well,
Or you don't know yet?
We didn't know yet. We kind of talked about that. You know, it's sort of, there's some things about the board retreat that really we wanted to work on for ourselves, for the board.
Just, just for, okay.
Yeah, but you know, I think it'll depend on how quickly you can do this. It would be great to roll it out at the board retreat.
Yeah. I was thinking that myself. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So Lisa, do you want to weigh in or add to it, or?
Um, I think, um, I think we just have to just suck it up and just do these things. We just need to come up with the, the steps. The, the, Melina left us a worksheet that, that was our homework. We were supposed to be working on. And I know Jackie kind of tweaked it to make, to give it out to everybody on the board. And I don't know where in this process that would happen, whether it would happen.
We could do that. I mean, we could do that anytime.
Right. So it just, it all ties together. And I, I, we did talk about this at the Board Governance Committee meeting. And I, I did, I said that I, I really need this some direction. I need this strategic plan in place because we have to meet minimum requirements. And it's really hard for me to, to make plans when I, I kind of think I know where we're going, but there might be changes and I, I need to incorporate that in our work.
Yes. Yeah. So if you want to commit resources to something that comes from this plan, we've got to know ahead of time. You can't just think of it in August. So, yeah, I agree. So we're on it. It will be done by May, Lisa.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Any, any other, any questions or comments? Thank, thanks. Thanks to you folks who are working on the strategic plan. You're doing a lot of legwork for us and, you know, hopefully we'll get through this and, and get on track. So thank you. Friends of the Seymour Library, there's anything happening with, with the friends?
Yes. So the friends have, of course, have not been able to meet due to the pandemic. Last year, the term for the officers ended, but all the officers agreed to serve for another year to get, you know, to get us to today. They really don't want to be officers anymore. There's, you know, whether it's work situations, life situations, whatever it is, we, we are having a crisis of leadership with the friends. So we, there will be a board meeting for the Friends Board. This week, Jackie is our liaison to the Friends of the Library, so she's going to be scheduling that. While, while as the library district, we're happy to support the friends in any way we can, they technically are a separate organization and we cannot take on their work. We, we really can't take on doing all of their membership. And I mean, Jackie already helps a tremendous amount with any of their mailings and and planning programs. So I guess the bottom line is there will be a Friends meeting sometime in the next month or two. And they'll elect new officers. So if any of you know of anybody who really loves the library and would be willing to step up and be part of the leadership team for the Friends of the Library, it does not mean that they have to do fundraising. That really doesn't have to happen at this point. We just want to stabilize the organization. So let me know if you know anybody who would be interested.
Yeah. Lisa, would you mind going through the current officers?
Sure.
Friends?
Sherry Ross is the president.
Right.
Jeff, Jeff Ludwig from Seward House is the vice president. They're expecting a new baby shortly. So he promised his wife that he would step back from some of his commitments. Ann Wiley is the treasurer. And I can't remember who the secretary is. Maybe, maybe Ann is acting both as secretary and treasurer.
Who, who was responsible for sending us the letters that we get every year, if I could ask, but?
Well, March Walsh, when she was she did it.
Yeah.
And when, when Ann Wiley accepted the treasurer's position, they actually split membership out of the treasurer's job. And so Barb Avino and Diane Leener were the membership chairs. But I think because of
Yeah.
technology challenges during the pandemic, they weren't able to do that this year. So they didn't send out any membership renewals last year. They did it all in January. It used to be, you know, if you joined June 12th, you'd get a reminder next year on June 12th. And instead, and put it all in whatever month, January or February this year. And it's just been, it's been a struggle because of quarantining materials. And Ann Wiley feels very strongly about quarantining the mail. So we have people calling here saying, I sent a check in last month or a while ago. Did you get it? And we're trying to track it down. So we were, that's one of the things we're going to talk to the board, the Friends Board about is I could make a deposit, you know, I could just put checks together and I could copy them, scan them or something so that the friends have a record, whether it's Ann Wiley or whether it's the membership chairs. But we should deposit the checks and not have them hanging out, waiting to be deposited.
Yeah. Yep. And you said that all of those officers are ready to give up. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
They can't give up until they, until they find a replacement, right?
Right. Yeah, you're right.
It's great incentive.
I have to say, they've done wonderful work in the past and it's
They really have. And I, I want to give a shout out to Ann Wiley. She fixed, there was a problem with that private foundation designation. And she, she really took care of changing that and getting everything correct. And that's, that was a lot of work. So. Ginny, did you have a question?
Not really.
And if they were to meet this board, it would be on Zoom, Lisa? It wouldn't be in?
Right now, right. Right now, right. It would be on Zoom.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Keep us appraised of when that is.
As soon as I find out, I'll make sure to send out the information.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the Children's Room Project, which is what, in the starting block, ready to go, right, Lisa?
It is. It is.
You want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure.
Do you want me to? It's up to you. You go ahead.
I'll start.
Closest to this project.
I'll start and you chime in. Um, we, we met with Chuck Bulley last week on Friday. Larry was there, Lisa Hayes, the architect came. We signed the contract. And Chuck has been submitting all of the, the work through the architect. So that's, that's great. Jill and I went to Albany and on Tuesday, we went to the furniture showroom and picked out all the furnishings. And then on Friday, when Lisa Hayes was here, we finalized all the colors. And I think I can share my screen so you could see the colors. See if I can get them. I just thought that would be fun for you. Okay, so you should be able to see these renderings. This is the hallway. It's this light gray and dark gray. And then in the Storytime Room, it's this apple, apple green. But what I think it was really helpful is to see this block of colors. The color scheme that really follows through are these blue gray, blues, grays, and then the pop of color of the apple green. And then I think that here's this elevation that shows where the little stairs are, that the lift is going to be in place. And underneath the stairs, there's going to be a little nook for kids to crawl in and little hang out there. A little reading nook. What I really wanted to show you.
If you hide out too, Lisa, is that?
I don't know if I, I don't know if I could fit there. Oh, here, I wanted to show you. So there's this, Jill, it's 3A, right? So this is just showing you what the ceiling, it's, it's about lighting in the ceiling. And in this back stacks over here, there's a big oval. It's called a cloud. And it's suspended from the ceiling and it's going to be blue. Close to this color, the, the colors in that back section are much in the blue gray color scheme. This is Jill's office back here. And then in the big room here for the fireplace is here. It, there's three clouds that hang at, at different levels. And there's lighting that's part of this. So the biggest circle, it's 10 feet across. It's going to be orange. So we, even though we have the blue gray colors with the pop of green, that's all in the carpeting. We added the orange color in some of the furnishings that we selected, some of the upholstery. And we pulled it into the cloud. And there's the blue, and then there's the green. So that was pretty exciting to get all of those colors picked out. Let's see if there was this, over here on this right hand side. This is the entrance as you're walking into this children's room area. So you, you just passed the boiler room on your left. And if you turned right, you'll be at the History Discovery Center entrance. So we have this molding will be this color bluish gray. The fish tank is over on the right, and then you're going to be walking into. Lisa Hayes has it labeled the parenting area, but I think it's about comfortable seating and some of the collections. Almost all of, at all of the furniture that's not attached to the wall is mobile. So we could, we could rearrange and have a lot of flexibility. So.
Good.
Very, very exciting. And I think that, I think that the color schemes are, are really fun. So that's, um.
Yeah.
That's the main news I have about what, what I've been seeing.
Great.
This, this.
The, the abatement, sorry, the abatement work will start.
Okay, that's my question.
This week or?
Next week.
Beginning of next. Thirty, what's, when's, what's today? The 20th, next week, the 30th or 31st, abatement work is proceed. At about two weeks, I think is two or three weeks is how long it's going to take for that. And then, and then the contractor will get in that the date of substantial completion, that is that everything is done except what we've, was referred to as a punch list, is supposed to be end of June. The only thing, or the one thing that can throw that off a bit is is a potential lead time for a lot of, a lot of the equipment and, and supplies, materials. It's just that, that's the way it is today. And so that may, may impact the schedule somewhat, but at the very least, I think, very latest, we should be mid, mid-July, I would guess. Sometimes, sometime this summer, at any rate, it should, it should be ready to go. Does that state, do you know, Lisa, does that substantial completion date include installation? It does include installation of the furnishings.
I don't think so. I think that that's, that's strictly Chuck's side of things.
But he is installing the furniture, right?
No, he's not. The furniture company, Accent Furniture will be installing it. So I was thinking that we'll know more. Yeah, yeah, I think, I think if we can open before August 1st, it would be fabulous. But I'm thinking that July is going to be furnishings and moving all of our collection back.
Okay.
He will be installing barricades so that he's going to be, they're going to be keeping, you know, public away from that area of construction. It will be a sort of a soft barricade. So the people in the hallways, that the people can still gain access to the history room. But they're taking the stairs out, both of the stairs from the glass, you know, where the stacks are going down into that space. So they're putting it on a hard layer there. So people are falling down the stairs that aren't there. I think that's about it. We'll be having project meetings about every two weeks, once things get started. Don't, I think they're going to be in person. But I think that if any of the board members are interested, I would certainly, you know, it's, it's certainly going to be open. And you're welcome to, to, to attend.
I'll make sure to keep everybody up to date when the meetings are scheduled. So you'll, you'll know and you'll be able to determine if you could come or not.
And thanks, Larry, for your help with this. Thank you. You're welcome very much.
Nancy had a question.
Yes, I'm sorry. Nancy.
Your video keeps coming in and out, Nancy. Maybe your signal is off a little bit.
No, I don't know. My internet connection is bad. So. Lucy, you met, you mentioned it there. I know, I'm sorry, forget it. You know, don't pay any attention. You mentioned the furniture from Albany. Are you by any locally? And of the, the community?
Are you talking about, if you're talking about furniture, that's all through state contract? Right, Lisa? So, so we're getting, we're getting, we're getting that, we're at a much reduced price. You think we're also getting that way? Lisa?
Where, so our, our, all the furniture is through a company called Accent Furniture, and they deal with several different manufacturers. And it's all on state contract pricing. And they coordinate the delivery. They coordinate if it's multiple vendors that they're dealing with. They coordinate the invoicing, so we only see one invoice.
Yeah. As, as far as, you know, go, you know, working with local folks now, so of course, Bulley, we're really happy that he's, he's engaged. He's also engaged local subcontractors who will be, who'll be performing work as well. So the, you know, the, the bones of the building will be done by Bulley and, and, you know, local people. The furnishings, you know, we, we get a, we get a pretty good size break out of it. So. Anyone else have questions or thoughts or comments about it?
I'm just glad.
We have to say.
Everything else that you're using.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Am I, Ellen, did, did you have a comment?
I, I, I didn't. But before I said, I thank you for serving on this committee about this. And I'm really happy about the, about it moving forward because I said it before, this is what Mrs. Dunn wanted.
Yeah.
So I'm really pleased about it.
Yeah, okay.
And hopefully we can all be at the grand opening in person.
In person, yeah.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, love that as opposed to having to video the.
Right. We'll see.
Yeah, we'll see, right. Everybody get the shots yet? Yeah. All right. We, we have any other business, any other, any other, anything else to discuss, Lisa?
Can I just give you an update from Finger Lakes? Um, there's, last year, there was a lot of talk about a required amount of trustee education. That's, it was suspended last year. They didn't pass it. It was probably due to the pandemic. But it looks like that's going to pass in May or June. And trustees would be required to have two hours of trustee education per year. It, it can't just be me talking at a meeting. It has to be somebody from Finger Lakes coming to present or attending some kind of a webinar through Finger Lakes. So, or attending the Library Trustee Association Conference, something like that. So there will be more information about trustee education. The, I think I, I can't remember if I told you already that the state is going to require us to be open our, our minimum standards. We have to meet the minimum standards starting June 1st. So I'm working with Jill to get that in place. We'll be open 56 hours a week. We, we're starting April 5th. We're going to be open 45 hours a week. So we have a little bit of time to kind of ease into the, the June 1st. Finger Lakes has stopped quarantining materials for the amount of time that they were. They've dropped it down to 24 hours. And Tompkins County Public Library is moving their quarantine to 24 hours. And they feel they're going to drop quarantining materials sometime in the next two to three months. I think that's the main information. There will be a workshop through Finger Lakes that would count as trustee education. Sarah's going to send out emails for that. And just be looking for it. Do you, have you been receiving trustee emails from Finger Lakes? Okay, if, Linda, you haven't?
I have not.
And Ellen, all right, I will check.
I haven't either.
I'll check and see why you're not getting it. So, all right. But that is the only other thing I had to tell you. So now you're all up to date with Finger Lakes Library System. A new director is starting in Weet'sport in May. So we have a new librarian starting for Cuba County. So that's kind of interesting. And that's my news.
Okay.
And then it was Austin. She was retired, am I right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, very good, folks. Thank you. Thank you all. We are scheduled, our next meeting is, is in another month. And are we going to continue to have 70 degree weather?
Yeah.
Is that the plan?
That's the plan.
So in the meantime, we'll get out and enjoy it, I hope. Next meeting is the, is the 20th or, I guess it's the 27th? Yeah, 27th. And we'll continue in this format until further notice, right?
Right. Then the next meeting, I will have the audit. Elaine Buffington will be presenting that.
Okay, all right. It'll be April, April 27th at 4 o'clock.
27th, okay. That's what I thought. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Everybody.
Rest of your evening. Thank you.
Too.